... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was there any?
All kinds of problems today. Good evening. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here this evening on this beautiful summer night. Couple of things. We do have registration to address the board on any of the actionable items on our agenda this evening. So if anyone has, would like to comment on those before we take action, there are forms over here near our attorney who is not attorney of it. Would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Devon DiMarco.
Devon DiMarco. So, forms are up here. Fill them out, return them to the board table, and we will bring you up for those comments at the appropriate time. The other thing is, all board members were provided background information to the items on the agenda in preparation for tonight's meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed, so welcome to anyone who's viewing at home or at a later date through YouTube. We also have public comment at the end of the meeting for anyone who would like to discuss any topic that they'd like to bring before the board. We welcome you to do that. Same process. Fill out a form, return it to the board table, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time in the meeting. So with all that part done, we'll begin with our student and staff presentations. Do we have anything this evening? I don't think so. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board tonight? If not, we'll begin with our superintendent's consent agenda, which contains our personnel report for July the 24th, our donations report, and claims report. And I do not believe we have any facility used. So do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second. Is there any discussion or comments?
I have a couple of comments and a question. The personnel report indicates that we do have some new teachers that have been hired, and I'm really proud to see that our new teachers' pay salaries are very competitive based on neighboring districts. And one of the things that we note is that although some school districts, it seems as if their salaries are a little bit higher, their insurance premiums are very high. And so I'm just proud to say that we're doing the right thing with our teachers, and we welcome those new teachers coming to our schools.
Thank you. Great comment. And you're right. It is kind of, you have to kind of look at that whole employment package. And Portage traditionally is much better for the insurance part of that from as far as employee contribution and great coverage. So we, to a degree, I think we probably all can be very proud of that.
And also have a comment. And thank you to, we have a donation of, a monetary donation, the amount of $40,000. And I, I'm not sure if I could even state their names. We usually don't, but because...
I don't know if this is someone who would want us to or not.
I'm not sure. But the donation is for the Portage High School Physics Department. And my question would be, how do we go about designating the amount to that particular department? $40,000 is a substantial amount.
So based on their curriculum needs that are specific, obviously, to the state standards, their programs and their courses, they will determine what's going to be their plan of action, a timeline, get those things to us. There will be a process in place to be certain that the money is being spent, you know, obviously with internal controls in place with Mr. Stills, come over to Dr. Stevens, matching the curriculum guidelines that we have set in place, and then we'll go to finance. So I can't speak at the moment that there obviously is a plan because that will be taking effect once those donations, the donation amount is approved.
So thank you to these two individuals for that generous donation.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Here you don't call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which contains our minutes from our July the 10th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
You have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on. We do not have any old business. We'll move on to new business. This is an exciting one. We have the approval of the adoption of the CEP program for the Food Service Department.
So we do have our Food Service Director, Mrs. Dawn Kelly, here in the event that you guys have any questions or anything you'd like her to further expand upon. Just in the best interest of sharing what this program is, it is the Community Support Engagement Program. When we consider what it requires to qualify for this program, Mrs. Kelly and her team have really done a great job to highlight the importance of providing all children with meals without any charge for breakfast and lunch every day. The key reasons for this recommendation, as outlined by Dawn, are ensuring nutritional equity, streamlining operations, eliminating stigma, increasing participation rates in our breakfast and lunch programs, improving health and well-being, and community support and engagement. We have a positive message to the community that will be sent out, of course, asking for your consideration and approval of this as Melissa is in the audience, ready to send that to all of our families once you've considered that and hopefully move forward with Dawn's recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the CEP program for the Food Service Department?
I make a motion to approve the CEP program for Food Service.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd like to start. First off, Dawn, I thought the letter was fabulous. I thought you did a great job on it. You look at something like this, and this is something we've talked about in the past on, and it isn't about, you know, can people afford lunch or not. It's more about making sure kids have the opportunity to have a breakfast and a good lunch and all have the opportunity to have the same, which is important because, you know, people live busy lives and sometimes kids are left to kind of fend for themselves. You know what I mean? I've had kids, and I can tell you, we've all experienced that. So to have this opportunity for our kids and the work that you put into researching this and getting this, it's just phenomenal. And I hope that our families understand and recognize what a great step this is. I know it's important to us on the board because we've talked about it before, which we wish we could do something like this. So the fact that you were able to do it and pull it off, you've got my support 100%. And again, just truly appreciate it. And again, it's just good for all our kids, and it's the right thing to do. And I wish the government would recognize that and do that everywhere, but I'm really proud of the fact that we have the opportunity to do that here. So thank you.
My understanding, and first of all, thank you and to you and your staff for putting this together, doing the research. And I'm sure the document was very lengthy and needed just a lot of information. But research shows that especially, you know, breakfast, and sometimes families run out of milk or cereal or whatever they have for breakfast, or they run out of time. So my understanding too is that during the pandemic, when we did provide meals at no charge, that there was an increase in the number of meals that were served.
Specifically breakfast. They were significant. And, you know, I think it's great, as I've shared with you in the past, and I need to get those pictures recirculated to you again. You know, just even the food carts that Dawn and her team have implemented where they're right at the doors. Kids are coming in and there's various choices. So that as well, you know, it's literally intended to bring food to our kids at their fingertips where it's almost like that positive peer pressure. If everybody's grabbing something to eat and take to their first class or take down to second grade to eat, then the more likely others are going to as well. So they're really strategic about where they put those things. You know, last year, they even did a pop-up smoothie bar because she could get a certain number of smoothies at the high school. So they did this pop-up and they went like hotcakes. So it is, it takes a lot, as you mentioned, but it's been a really concerted effort and something I think everyone should be proud of, and I think our families will really appreciate because goodness knows there's plenty of things to spend money on. So to eliminate this as an expenditure in your monthly budget is huge.
Any other comments or discussion?
Is there going to be a press release?
I think that's what Chief Simons will be prepared to do. She probably has it written already.
She just has to press the send button.
She had confidence we wouldn't turn this one down.
Oh, okay.
If there's no further discussion, then call the roll, please.
Trustee Willetta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next up, we have our approval of the 2023 and 24 payroll schedules.
So of course, these are pretty self-explanatory, but you'll notice, and I appreciate that payroll does this. There are two locations on the calendar that indicate either an early pay date or a late pay date. So we like to get this out as soon as possible for our employees so they can best plan their budgeting needs.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and second. Any discussion? Then call roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of contracts for Portage High School MBA Adaptive Schedular, Power School Naviance, and Indiana Online Academy for Athletics, Hootie Contract for the IT Department, Bell Technology, Microsoft for title and curriculum, and Nuia and Amplify for Administration, Wellness IQ, Virgin Pulse contracts. Do we have a motion to approve the following contracts? Actually, first, maybe we ought to let Dr. Almanas explain those.
So I'm really excited about the MBA Adaptive Schedular. We've been studying something called It's About Time, and we did the professional development in the evenings, Teachers and Administrators who were interested, a series. And it's all about providing not only that level-one tier support for all students regarding their instructional needs, but then what do you do so that you can intervene or accelerate students in a timely manner and consistently? So the MBA Schedule Adapter is something that is going to allow not only our high school, but our high school had specifically asked for it, but our middle schools as well to, they will have a period within the day that they will go, they can sign up to go to certain teachers. Maybe one of their own teachers, maybe not. And it's about 30 minutes a day. Now, if you have failed your English test, you'll be assigned to me. I can assign you to me, and then you don't have the option to choose. You know, you're going in there for remediation that day. But if you're caught up on your work and you don't need any remediation, you can go choose to do an enrichment project of your choosing, such as, you know, we're going to do something with clay and I don't get to take an art class, or to be able to go and work on some sort of a self-paced project or something that teachers are putting out there. The MBA Schedular, what this will do then is it will change the teacher's class to indicate who is in there so that we still have accurate attendance, so that we know where everyone is at all times. Again, you can, these can be open spots as well as pre-assigned, but it really gives a lot of opportunities for our kids every day. Like I said, it's about a 30-minute span of time. Also helps with our guidance counselors to be able to really meet the needs of kids and get to where they are. Naviance, and this is our scheduling tool for career exploration. This is in compliance with IDOE. And also college applications. This is required to be used grade six through 12. The cost of that is $24,790. I should also mention that the Adaptive Schedular is $4,800. The Huddle Athletic Contract, this is our mobile platform that allows our teams to host, share, and review videos, give athletes the ability to create their own highlights, and share them with recruiters. This is a cost of $13,000. Microsoft 365, it's the comprehensive suite of tools that enhance instructional capabilities with the new devices our teachers will be receiving when they get back this fall in a few weeks. And the cost of this is $37,000. I also do want to mention that so far, all these that I've mentioned are one-year contracts. The NWEA MAP Growth and Amplify, this is going to be paid for with Formative Assessment Grant Funds. As you know, NWEA measures our achievement and growth in both math and reading, kindergarten through 11th grade, with a total cost of $69,000 with that Formative Assessment Grant. You do have to have some sort of an assessment. Adaptive is what we prefer to utilize. So those funds are being used for what that grant is intended. And also DIBELS, our longstanding assessment for basic early literacy skills. And Amplify M-Class is our digital platform for assessing our students in literacy and keeping records of that. That's a K-2 program with a one-year contract for $19,575. Indiana Online Academy, this is a program that is ICAP credentialed. It is to provide both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So whether it be a live virtual setting or a pre-recorded setting or self-paced, on-demand, as you see fit, if a kid wakes up early and happens to want to get some more of their work done, they can. This is for our PHS students who maybe have a very unique circumstance. It could be that this is a student who is struggling with anxiety, or they could be out because they've had some medical complications. So they can get on and have, again, synchronous and asynchronous opportunities to stay on track. We have the enrollment for our students. This is an opportunity for any student in need to be able to be in this program. The cost is $215 per student, per course, for the year, and we kind of like get the seats as needed. So it's a great opportunity for our kids. And again, you know, when you think of alternative opportunities for kids, the more opportunities we have, the better off we are. And then Wellness IQ, this is an exciting one. We receive the wellness credit every year through our insurance company with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We want to provide a health and well-being engagement solution. And so this credit, you either use it or you lose it each year. And we're going to implement the, as you said it, the Virgin Pulse, which is a really great opportunity. It's virtual. It's very engaging. There are intrinsic and extrinsic opportunities to be motivated. It's very sociable because you can kind of make teams and have challenges and different things. So there's a lot of opportunity with that, and we're excited to bring that to our employees. So the cost is $4.05 per employee that opts into it per month. And this is, again, because it's being paid for based on that wellness credit, it is specific to those on our insurance. We very well may look at, once this launch starts, allowing others who maybe aren't on the insurance, where we would possibly allow them to opt in and pay, but that would be determined at a later date.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contracts as read?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just have a comment and a question. For the Online Academy, the comment that I have is that it allows some students who probably would not graduate on time or not, give them the opportunity to get some credits, and that's very valuable for our students in our school district. Would you be able to guess, guesstimate about how many students would participate based on last year's?
Sure. So, you know, it's great because this is an opportunity that allows students from all achievement levels to take part in this. So we have some very high-achieving students as well that, again, may just be having different situations that they need to be home during this time. So on average, we typically have about 20 students in at a time. But what we're finding is they are typically then returning back after a period of time because we do keep very close contact with students and families. And then they are returning back to the regular classroom setting. Last year, we had typically, again, about 20 a semester, but there were five that were in for the full duration of the school year. As we're starting up this year, there are five, not necessarily those same five, that will be returning from last semester. And then right now, we have about five, between five and 10, that are ready to go in for this semester. And then we'll continue to evaluate. My team and I had a meeting this morning with a student who had been in a virtual setting that wasn't PTS, wants to get back in after COVID to kind of get back, but not necessarily full-time yet, kind of get their feet wet in it. So coming to school for a couple of class periods and then doing this for a couple of class periods. So, and again, a student who's just had some different challenges and is really excited to get back into that routine, but wants to take it a little slower.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the contracts? Here you don't call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
One more second, I'm sorry, President Miletta. I did just want to share real quickly too with Virgin Pulse. So there are daily cards about mindful eating that can come up. You can track your mood, your sleep if you want. You also have different videos that you can subscribe to. There is ways to build healthy habits and gain reports. You can share, build teams, engage in these challenges. There's coaching, your care checklist. We can send messages through there of encouragement and leaderboards and different things. It's very individualized, but then there are also incentives built in. So you can kind of cash in your tracked points for, let's say, a Starbucks gift card. So there's some opportunities for that. There are also some other incentives we've considered within the district as well. So we're excited, but it's, there's a lot of research behind engagement. There's a lot of research behind that sense of belonging. And obviously, then, just making sure we have more options for our employees to engage in a healthy lifestyle.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have the acceptance of the High Ability Grant.
So the IDOE has accepted our application for this program, approved in the amount of $71,795. The grant was written to support the implementation of our assessments that identify the high-ability students as well as to support the professional development and curricular planning needs of our high-ability programs.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the High Ability Grant Funds?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. As again, you always seem to find money for us. A great job there. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question because it kind of feeds into ICAP, as you were just talking about. Sometimes we work from the deficit mindset. Are there growth mindset opportunities with ICAP and High Ability at all for students to graduate early? Because there are some dollars accessible and available to students if they graduate early.
Yes.
So wondering how are you?
Yes, so we are definitely utilizing the opportunity for students to graduate early, although it's interesting because the state rewards the student and punishes the district. But that's okay because it's still what's right for that student to be able to graduate early. But they do adjust our ADM and take those funds back or not send them. So yes, we are doing that. But then as far as looking at that potential, we definitely, our High Ability program is focused on the potential of students. And if you recall, a couple of years back, we had that math presentation from the high school and how we're doing that co-teaching model to encourage more students to get in there who have the potential, but maybe are lacking the academic confidence or just have had a gap in not receiving such a rigorous curriculum. So there's that. But we also have the cluster grouping at the elementary school. So we're minimizing that instructional range for our teachers by clustering students in groups. Not that we have a High Ability class. That's not the point either. It's also about building capacity of other students by being exposed to that rigor and having opportunities. Did I answer your question? Okay. I also, you know, we do, as I said, the cluster grouping. We also do several things where we pull students out, such as that acceleration and differentiation that I talked about, that that scheduler is going to help us with even more so at the secondary level because it's much easier at the elementary level. But this will really, really enhance that. And then, of course, the various separate classrooms, so the AP classes, the dual credit, the self-paced, like I said, we have some of those high achievers in the program that we just, you just approve for the virtual options, the capstones, extension, electives, and then even those small project-based opportunities that are going to come from like interests of, and we really want the teachers to consider what their interests are so then I can get an enrichment activity based on my interests or maybe just because I like that teacher and I'm going to step outside the box and do something a little different. So kind of looking at all students and those areas that they achieve in and trying to help build that further. That's a lot where that professional development piece comes in because it may not be a High Ability student, but giving our teachers that training is really beneficial.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Then call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Okay. Our last bit of actionable items are our approval of the overnight field trip by Portage High School to Terre Haute, Indiana, on August the 11th and 12th for the boys' cross-country meet. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
One second.
Good motion and second. Any discussion? Then call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletta?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we move on to our superintendent reports.
Devon, I'd like to tell Ken I was really short on this today. First of all, Community Buyback Program. As you know, we're in the thick of that. It closes this evening at 11:00 PM. So for those interested in purchasing a retired device from the district, they do not come with a charger, but you can purchase one on that site, on the site link that was provided. So at 11 o'clock tonight, we've had a lot of interest and a lot of positive feedback about that. I just want to thank Dawn and her team for their efforts with getting our students meals at no charge. As you know, it's a huge undertaking. It's an additional federal program. It's a lot more monitoring, all of those things, but it's definitely going to benefit our students, their families, and the community. And of course, Nick also is highly involved in making sure we've got things in place for that as well as far as just us all doing our research. So Dawn and, Dawn has done all the groundwork and nicely provided that information so that Nick and I could look into that further before bringing it to you. Excited because we'll be sharing with our families, again, although it is not funded fully, the textbook fees for next school year, there will not be any. We'll be communicating that to our families. Now, if a student loses a device, loses a library book, damages it, that's different. They can still be assessed a fee for lost or damaged items because we, of course, need to have some way to replace. But as far as curricular fees, there are not any. Now, as you know, the state gave $150 per student, which, that doesn't even cover photography if a student is taking photography. So that's just one class as an example, but we are just excited that that means a lot for families. HVAC projects, they're either on schedule, which is that central or head of schedule at Saylor. So those are going really well. We're gearing up, of course, for the start of school. Excited to welcome back our teachers and our school year support staff, and of course, for our students to return in a very future.
few short weeks. And then, sitting, sitting at your chair was the community profile for the Portage Chamber of Commerce. Of course, Melissa did a great job in the development of what is in there. And I know last time, we talked about the beautiful mailer that went home, and then now this profile in here. And then in the future, the continued marketing of our strategic plan, and how we'll assess that and communicate those results in the coming time ahead. So again, just good things going on and good things being shared.
Great. Thank you. Question for you, state of the schools. I think I did see something published with the Chamber.
I believe September 21st. Yes. I never know dates, just so you know, so that's-
Well, you lost your planner. Oh.
So yeah, so if you maybe send a reminder, I'll send you to the board to see who would like to attend. I'm sure we'd like to be there for you. So, thank you. Anything else for the superintendent or comments?
Yes, the back-to-school kickoff, the annual kickoff for staff.
Yes. So I will send that to you this week as well, doing that a little differently, because we also have Amy Dean, the Behavior Queen, coming. And so she will be doing some professional development. So we're actually going to have the all-school orientation kind of midday, right? Okay, that's what I thought we had decided. So I will make sure to share with you the time of that, and then we can, we can make sure that, I'll highlight that in this week's update.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the superintendent? Any items that were not on the agenda the board would like to bring up?
I was going to just make a comment that I attended the picnic for the year-round employees. That was last week.
No, I think it was two weeks ago now.
Was it two weeks ago?
Yeah, something like that.
So I, I, you know, enjoyed meeting some new employees, and it was just a nice gesture to have everyone together, and the location was also nice, too.
We ended up switching it to the auxiliary services, so that we had the, some of the bays and the bus barn, and it really ended up nice. They were able to get out of the sun that way a little better than just to attend normally. And it was our first time since COVID to bring that back. So it was great.
It was good. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. So I do know, I did skip over part of our meeting today by accident, the board reports. Did anybody have any board reports? No one called me out on it, so it's a good time for me to miss it, right? So she would have got me. She actually got a vote for me. So if there is nothing else, I don't believe we had any public comments. Devin, thank you for sitting in this evening with us.
Thanks for having me.
If there's no other business-